One commissioner who would like to participate remotely. Tim, can you hear us? Can you identify yourself and the reason for your remote participation? Can we turn by up a little? Okay, thanks, Tim. Do we have any motion to allow Tim to participate remotely?
I move that the Planning Commission approved electronic participation by Mr. Stevens in this meeting for personal reasons related to travel pursuant to the Planning Commission's policy for remote participation in planning commission meetings as adopted on March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
You move?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Please roll call, vote please, Mr. Trainor.
Yep, Ms. Ms. Craft, Ms. Friedlmer?
Yes.
Ms. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
And Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Alright, motion passed.
Okay, so let's all move on with the agenda then. We have excellent work session here from our friends from the Housing Commission today. We are going to lead off with that joint work session. We have a couple of action items, including a complaint amendment and for the Tinner Hill District, and then the floodplain map public hearing. I would like to amend the agenda so we can let our friends from the Housing Commission get out of here earlier and move up the item, the work session item to number five of the receipt of petition number six. So with that changed, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
With the job meeting agenda as you have revised.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Okay, uh, the agenda is adopted. Number four speaker's here, so go ahead and amend today. So let's move on to the first, first work session item, which is the Comprehensive Plan Demographic Chapter update joint work session with the Housing Commission. Mr. Sartor.
Alright, thank the chairs, Quintero and Anderson, as well as members of the Planning Commission and Housing Commission. As you may remember, these two groups actually met several months ago to look at the outcome of a demographic study. And this is really the next step of the process. It is going back and updating the city's demographics chapter. These materials were in front of the Planning Commission during a work session on February seventh and have since been revised. I'll let the case planners talk through those revisions. I think this is the Housing Commission's first time seeing this draft chapter. And so I'm looking forward to the conversation that comes out of the two groups tonight. Just to set up next steps, this is scheduled to be the Planning Commission's final work session on this item. If you jump to line two fifty-seven in the timing section, you'll see this is scheduled to be the Planning Commission's final work session on May fifteenth. City Council will be reviewing these materials at a work session next Monday, May twentieth. And the Council has actually asked, invited both of these groups to join them as part of that work session and conversation. Let's see then next steps. These materials after some revisions will come back to the Planning Commission for your formal action and recommendations, Council as part of this public hearing on June fifth, and then back to Council for their final consideration on June tenth. So that's where we are process-wise, and I'll turn it over to our lead planner, Ms. Wondell, Emily Bazemore.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emily Bazemore. I'm a senior planner here of the city. And tonight I'm here to talk about demographics, if you will. So tonight, the Planning Commission and Housing Commission are requested to review and provide feedback on the revised draft updated chapter for demographics. The Planning Commission last reviewed the draft updated demographics chapter during a work session on February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. And the Planning Commission is scheduled to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to Council during their June fifth meeting. Tonight, there is no formal action requested at this time, Planning Commission or Housing Commission. And I want to move down to line eighteen to take a look at some updates since that February seventh work session. So revisions to the draft chapter are highlighted in gray throughout the chapter cast. These revisions were made based on feedback from City Council, Planning Commission, and Boards and Commissions. There was a Boards and Commissions comments matrix attached to the staff report. I encourage everyone to take a look at it. A lot of good feedback from various boards and commissions throughout the city. So on line twenty-four, we start to see some major changes. Some major chapter revisions include the following. Number one, the addition of the following sections. First, assessing the gap between local employment options and local housing options, a whole new section of the plan or the chapter here. And then we also have two new appendices. So number E, Appendix E corresponds with that new section above, and it gets into the methodology for the gap analysis. Appendix T is our on-the-mat commuting patterns. And then moving on to line thirty, we have the addition of the following strategy sections. So you have some new strategy sections, including access and belonging, transportation, and climate and sustainability. We also have new strategies. So within those overarching categories, we have smaller strategies under housing affordability and sorry, it's the type of availability, affordability and availability, employment, and then also public infrastructure, facilities, and services. And you'll also notice that from the last draft to this draft, we've included some photos, especially in like the connections and strategy section of the chapter. Moving on to line forty, here we talk about public engagement, which we did a lot of. So the draft updated chapter was reviewed by the following Boards and Commissions throughout the months of March and April. We visited the AAB on March thirteenth, Urban Forestry on March twentieth, the Economic Development Authority on April ninth, the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation on April tenth, also the Recreation of Parks Advisory Board on April tenth. And then we visited three different groups on April eighteenth. That was Human Services Advisory Council, Environmental Sustainability Council, and the Arts and Humanities Council. In addition to the Boards and Commissions review, the draft chapter was open for review by the general public through informational pop-ups at the following locations. We had two at Mr. Brown's Park, one on the twenty-fourth of April and one on the twenty-fifth. We also had one at the Farmer's Market that weekend on April twenty-seventh. Additionally, planning staff in collaboration with FCC TV produced an informational video that was actually linked to the staff report. If you guys got a chance to take a look at it, I also heard it was streaming on cable, which is awesome, on the demographics chapter update. It could be viewed on the project webpage as well, or the city's YouTube channel, our cable channel. And we also published it as part of the focus, which is our city newsletter. Information about the draft or the chapter update has also been distributed, again, as part of the focus as the project continues to progress. So a little bit of background information on demographics. So demographics, including population, household, and employment trends and projections are an important base of information for city planning. Population, household, and employment trends or projections are used when planning for the city's housing, transportation, economic, parks, and recreation, and public facility needs. The city of Falls Church last updated its demographics projections in two thousand and eighteen. The Comprehensive Plan Chapter Two, People, Housing, and Jobs, was adopted on August twelfth of two thousand and nineteen and incorporated those two thousand and eighteen projections. The city is now embarking on an update to the two thousand and nineteen demographics chapter to reflect the demographics data of the city of Falls Church today. The process kicked off all the way back in February of two thousand and twenty-four, and it's slated to wrap up next month in June of two thousand and twenty-four. Moving down to line one oh six, we have the city's vision statement. And I just want to highlight that the demographics chapter helps to support the goals of the city's two thousand and forty vision statement. And it's stated right here below on line one ten and goes to line one seventeen. Right below that, we have a little write-up on the demographic study. I just want to put it out there again that we completed this demographic study in fall two thousand and twenty-three. I know you all had a joint work session, as Paul said, around that time to take a look at the study that was produced by the Stephen Fuller Institute at George Mason. And that delivered a regional trends report, and it also delivered some projections around population, employment, and housing, as well as school projections. So now I just want to take a really quick look at line one seventy-seven, and that asks the question of why demographics matter for the city of Falls Church's comprehensive plan. So analyzing demographic trends and forecasts helps to form the framework for understanding connections between different parts of the community that we're planning. And it does so by determining needs and services and amenities in the city, planning for future facility needs, assessing the relationship between residential and commercial development, and also evaluating housing needs and pursuing inclusive housing policies. All of these are important aspects to planning the city, and they're included as part of our comprehensive plan. Moving on to line two fourteen of the staff report. Here we have our connections and strategies. So the connections and strategy section, and we'll put this up on the screen in a few minutes, explores topics of general community interest and suggests ways to inform those conversations with demographic projections. Topic areas included in this chapter include access and belonging, housing availability and affordability, employment, public infrastructure, facilities and services, transportation, climate and sustainability, and changing conditions. And again, we'll take a look at the connections and strategies pages in just a minute. I also want to highlight timing really quick before we hop over to the draft chapter. As Paul said, we kicked off with the City Council work session, or Planning Commission work session back in February, early February. And then we went to City Council for our first work session with them on February twentieth. Since then, we've been doing some words and commissions review, as well as our informational pop-ups, again, at Mr. Brown's Park and Farmer's Market. And here we are tonight to look at the revised chapter with Planning Commission and the Housing Commission in a joint work session. City Council reviews the chapter and work session next Monday. And then we come back to Planning Commission for a recommendation to City Council on a public hearing on June fifth, followed by a City Council final consideration meeting, public hearing on June tenth. Now I just want to take a second to take a look at the draft demographics chapter. We could go to that really quick right before we open the floor to some discussion and questions. So this is our draft. We could go to the next page. This is our introduction page where we have a great photo of folks enjoying a night out at the State Theater. And we're also introducing what it is that we're doing here and explaining why, again, demographics matter to the city of Falls Church's comprehensive plan. Next page, please. This is our overview. Here we get into some key trends seen throughout the city in the last five years. So we have some population trends, housing trends, employment trends. Next page, please. That I think triples into the next page. So we'll go to page five. Here we get into population trends. I just want to call out that first sentence that right now in the city, we have fourteen thousand, six hundred residents. Moving on to not the next page, but the page after. This is where we get into housing on page seven. If we move on to page nine, here we have our assessing the gap between local employment and local housing option section. This is a new section based on revisions and feedback from Boards and Commissions. Moving on to the next page. We have our employment trend section. Some good graphics along the right-hand side throughout this draft. Then moving on to page twelve, this is our last page before we get into connections and strategies. This is where we have forecasts, so looking into the future, what can we expect? We have a nice little graphic at the bottom of the page, figure fourteen. You can see different housing unit projections, population projections, and job projections here. Moving on to page twelve. So this is where we start our connections and strategies. This page is newer, this section for access and belonging. We have a couple strategies around access and belonging to kick off our connections portion and some great graphics. Here we have kids riding on the Falls Church Festival rides, and then also the Falls Church Festival right below. Moving on to the next page, this is our housing availability and affordability section. You can see some of our new mixed-use developments that include housing options on the right-hand side of the screen. Our next page is employment. We have two new strategies under employment. And then the page after, we have two different sections here. Public infrastructure, facilities, and services. Nice picture of the Mary Riley Styles Library. And then also transportation. We have a whole new section on transportation. Then our last page is the plan before getting into all of the appendix. We have a section on climate and sustainability, brand new section. And then, of course, we have our changing conditions section as well. And then the rest of the draft chapter is our appendix. So we have one on related plans. So this could be corresponding comprehensive plan chapters. But they can also be small area plans. So these are different planning documents that help to inform the demographics chapter. And vice versa, the demographics chapter and the data that's here in this chapter will help to inform important policy decisions and actions in those subsequent plans and comprehensive plan chapters. Appendix B is our planning process and public engagement, and then we have some planning approval sections. And then our methodology section on the income gap analysis. Yeah, I'm going to end it with the appendix and open up the floor to discussion and questions. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bazemore. Right, we've seen this before as a planning commission, that we said there's no action tonight. I thought it was nicely improved. I like the comments matrix. The access and the housing gap section were great additions, and you did a lot of outreach, and the engagement was great. So thank you for all that. It's, I know my commissioners, fellow commissioners have comments, but let's start with the Housing Commission, because you guys have been here for a while today. So it's okay with you to start it off, and take comments from you guys first.
So I have a question. This is a great report. The, when it comes to the strategies that are listed in the report, I know City Council is asking us very specifically for actions and projects that they can put into their two-year work plan. Do we have a list of strategies and housing? So I'll mention the housing and availability, affordability. It says, "Review and revise city policies such as land use, economic development chapters, zoning ordinance, and other comprehensive plan chapters for adequate housing availability." How, what are the actions specifically under those strategies that you're proposing?
Right, so I think that these are more like guiding documents when we're talking about housing. So looking at, you know, the zoning ordinance or the land use and economic development chapter, which is the last one chapter in the comprehensive plan. So a big part of the demographics chapter is getting updated data into the comprehensive plan to inform subsequent chapters. So you'll see in the housing availability and affordability section, we have a note about, to learn more about land use and zoning, turn to chapter four. We also have a note about chapter ten, which is the housing chapter. So really and truly, the actions and the goals, those like really tangible actions and goals are found in those chapters. I'm not sure if that directly answers, but it's about getting the data that you need to make those informed decisions as the Housing Commission, whether it's, you know, pushing for a change in the zoning ordinance or pushing for policy change in the housing chapter, and it really empowers you to do that with well-acquired data.
No, that's, that's very helpful. I was just wondering how, if, if there's a specific way we're going to marry up those strategies with the, what the City Council is asking us for in June with the work plan and two-year work plan. And if it's, I'm not sure if it's, it sounds like it's not, it's not actionable strategies at this point. They're just broad strategies.
Broad strategies, yes.
But I think that's the intent, if I could, like, I mean, this is a longer window document, right? This is going to last at least five years. We update it every five years. So the council work plan is sort of like a much more immediate action plan. This is intended to be a higher level kind of big-picture strategy that can help inform the council work plan and the recommendations that we make to Council on that and inform our other chapters.
No, that's great. And I know, I just know that the work plan was supposed to be a two-year work plan. So there might be a window to sort of, I don't know if the right word is, operationalize these strategies into something that can fit into this upcoming work plan discussion.
Well, I also think that the request for feedback to Council about their prayer means is separate from this. Like, they're two different work streams. So that's just a request to commissions for their feedback on our, you know, our contributions to their priorities, and this is like the, kind of, as you described, like the five-year bringing of the comprehensive plan, if someone's to, if I'm paraphrasing that correctly.
No, I, I think you're right on that. The, it's a little bit of a sigh, because it wasn't included in your packet materials, but it, but it is up on the web, actually, Mr. Trainor, if you're able to go to the Falls Church Comprehensive Plan. The, just, just to show the table, well, let's not go to it, right? Falls Church Comprehensive Plan, it's a, it's a collection of chapters, right? There's a vision statement, a demographics chapter, and then there's a series of functional chapters that follow after that. And the housing chapter is one of the more recently adopted ones. So I think if you're, if the question is sort of, how do we functionally use this information that we're seeing tonight? I think what you might do is use this as, these are the city's first projections coming out of COVID and understanding maybe what footing the city is on and where it's going. And so then you might go to the work you've already got going on with the affordable living policy update and say, gosh, what are, based on this, the most important things out of there we should be doing? Or you could go back to the housing chapter and say, out of that housing chapter, which was a twenty-plus-year plan, what are the things we really want to do in the next two years? So I, I don't mean for this to rewrite the work that's already been done or, or that's ongoing. So I think it's, it's more additive to what's going on. And so I think use those specific efforts, whether it's affordable living policy update or the housing chapter, to go sort of pick the things out of there that are most important to, to your point now in the next two years.
I have a question about the, the section that was added about the gap between employment options and local housing, employment options and housing options within Falls Church City, which I think is really interesting and something that we've thought about a lot as a commission. Yeah, sorry, this is on page nine, yep. This is definitely something that the Housing Commission has talked a lot about. And I, I think I'm, yeah, especially since this is something that's added, like, I'm curious about where you see that fitting into potentially some of those like strategies and action items. Well, I'll say that with the, you know, caveat that I know this is a sort of a broad, a broad look, and we're not looking at particular action items yet, but I just would like to know about sort of your vision, where you see that potentially going.
Yeah, so specifically like the connections and strategies in this particular chapter, how the two kind of marry. So this section and then what we have at the end, is that the question?
I, I think it's more, so if this is, if this section is just something that was added more recently, is, is this, um, I guess are there, are there, is this like building to something else? Like, oh, well, we have this question, and we're adding this thing, and we're, you know, because of the insight we got from, from this, we're thinking about something that we haven't been thinking about before?
Yeah, I think it was interesting going through the process and seeing how many people come into the city for work but don't live in the city. That four sixty number is called out towards the end of the appendix is really startling for any, many of us. So I think, you know, here, what we're really trying to do is take a look at that. So who's coming into the city? What are their affordability needs when it comes to housing? And, and how can we get, you know, more people that live or work in the city, living in the city? And you'll see in the connections and strategies, I believe we do talk a little bit about workforce housing and being able to develop housing that is attainable to our workforce. And I think here you're really seeing like what the workforce in the city can afford, whether it's a one-person, single-person household or two-person household. So I, I think that's what we're really trying to get at, is who lives in the city? Where do they work, outflow workers, but who's coming into the city and what can they afford? And how can we get more people to have access to our community and housing options in the community?
I'll put, I know I've talked to several people about this, but one of the things that the Housing Commission's been working on over the past couple of years is coming up with unit goals for affordable housing, just looking at, you know, here's where we are right now, here's what we've added, here's what we're losing. And we've used some of these initial numbers from the demographic report just to look at projections. But I think one way that this could be really valuable to us is pulling in data beyond just that population projection and things like this to say, sort of support the additional support to, to the request or the recommendation that we focus more on creating some of these, some housing that would be affordable to chunks of the workforce that are coming in here.
Yeah.
Especially because if you're looking at, if you're looking at like incomes of, you know, forty K, like that's really, a lot of times when we talk about workforce housing, it's more at like the eighty percent to a hundred percent AMI level, and that's more at the, wait, more than that. Like, that's, that's like substantially below sixty, I think. So that's something that I think is very informative to us, which is, which is helpful.
It would also be helpful in the context of some of the forecasts here that do show that housing units increasing at a greater percentage in the next sixteen years than the number of residents as a, as a percentage. You know, I think that that, you know, out of context of the later addressed housing affordability goal is potentially misleading. So, yeah, any, any ability to break that out would be helpful.
Because that's market, that's all housing, which is predominantly market rate housing. And as currently forecasted, affordable units will be decreased over the same period.
Other comments on your end? The Housing Commission? Questions, comments? Alright, we'll open up to, to the five visions, well. Tim, so I don't forget you. We'll start with you, since you're remotely.
Go ahead, Tim.
We broke it a little there, but it was about the reducing commute burdens. Canute tires will help achieve greenhouse gas emission goals. Any other here, Tim? Other commissioners?
I have something. I have a question, just to kind of go back to the affordability and the assessment of that gap. We talked about, or it speaks to what the average rent of a cost burden versus extremely cost burden in one single earner family, double earner family. And then in the appendices, we talk about the average rent in certain facilities that are available right now. And so I think what would be helpful, because I think some of these have, we've, we've captured some affordable units in some of these new developments, and so it's hard to see where those fall within that cost burden versus not cost burden, because I see founders row one and two, we had a total of sixty-one units that are affordable. But I wonder if we're missing the mark on affordability, if we're targeting those units at like, if it's eighty percent AMI, but yet the single earner and the double earner, I don't, I don't know where those values show up in accord, in accordance with what we've captured to date from the development. to date from the developments that are, that we've already captured eighty U's, right? And then how do we address that in future developments? If we're missing the mark of affordability, at least for those units that we're trying to secure, what should we be targeting if it's not eighty percent because it's fifty percent AMI? So it'd be good to kind of see how that correlates. I didn't, I just, I couldn't find it. I'm sure it's out there.
If if I could just understand the question. So one, I think just to clarify on the methodology, uh on page nineteen, uh correct me if I'm wrong here, but I don't think the committed affordable units are are included in this tally. So this is just what was available for rent on a couple of, right? So these are actual sort of offerings of of um apartment homes in the city. Uh and they don't include the committed affordable units. And and so I think then your substantive question is um how do maybe these rent rates equate to the the rent rates in the committed affordable units?
Yeah, I would like, I I mean, it'd be curi-, I'm curious to understand that component of what cost burden is and extreme cost burden is and what is the rate of the affordability, of the affordable units that we've already procured in these developments? Does it meet that or does it miss that mark entirely? And then how, moving forward, how do we secure more affordable units that will meet the mark?
Okay.
Well, and I think that ties a little bit to what Meredith was saying earlier. I I might have missed it because I admittedly looked at this relatively quickly. But when we talk about what the incomes of the city workers are who can't afford to live in Fall Church, what what AMI bands are they at predominantly? So we know what, what do the units need to be set at in order to be developing units that would be affordable?
So we know that over, correct me if I'm wrong, but over fifty percent of people on the waitlist for ADUs have, are under the fifty percent AMI, under fifty percent AMI. So there's already, and we have way fewer than that percentage wise of um ADUs in the city. So there's a huge gap there.
Yeah.
Um and then when you look at that, I wasn't even surprised by that number, the forty thou thirty nine 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 six for people coming in. Because that's, that's, that is a huge gap. But anyhow, yeah, so we're aware of the gap. And so the Affordable Living Policy Work Group is also looking at those numbers and trying to make recommendations for the next five years because, partly because of.
Oh, we have, we we have that data for what the waitlist is. I think it'd be helpful to also have that data for inflow workers as well. To know kind of how that compares, is that group also, you know, fifty percent below fifty percent AMI? Or what's kind of the breakdown?
Yeah, because like Meredith was saying, we usually talk about T T W, teacher workforce units, and that's probably eighty to hundred, up to a hundred and ten percent in the, right?
I think they're at eighty.
But we don't really think about the forty.
Is that right? Like, is that the right place for that to be?
Yeah, so maybe our teachers add eighty percent AMI, I have no idea. I guess it depends on what year they're in, but yeah.
Graphic rate that compares. So we're working on producing a graphic chart that compares the information that's in this gap analysis to AMI thresholds.
Um so we have the AMI percentage. These, this median flow worker salary we're using at different um household sizes. It'll show that if this is a one person households um under, making this income, it's at this percent of the AMI. Um so that's an analysis that's ongoing and will hopefully uh be included in the chapter, uh but didn't make it to the draft yet. Do you have those numbers though that I, that we could look at maybe? For the, I'm just.
Not on hand tonight.
No, but I mean, maybe like next week for sure.
Uh I, yeah, I, uh we had that request come in earlier this week as well. So I think we're expecting to get them into the council packet for next Monday. So it's, um I mean, this is, this is sort of an evolving thing. And really it is about sort of the the sort of why is affordable housing so important, right? It's not just because affordable housing, it it is a good thing, but why is it a good thing? Well, because it's the underpinning of your whole community in the sense that if you want to have jobs in an economy, then there need to be places for for the people who are in those jobs to live. Um and so when you think about approximately nine thousand jobs uh sort of in the city, day in, day out, can that workforce afford to live um in in the community that they're helping create?
And and the answer is no. Um and one of the things, sort of speaking to that, you know, are we, are we, you know, are the units that we're adding, are they in the AMI buckets that we're, that we need? That's one of the things that we've done in our report that we're going to be presenting to council. Um has up the um unit goals that we've put together for twenty forty and it breaks everything out into some different AMI buckets. So we basically show like, here's our distribution now, here's what's coming online and where does it fall in those different categories? And of course, you could, you know, that's um on the premise that where we are right now is good. I think we have some recommendations about, you know, given this huge gap, like we may want to shift the mix as we're adding units to something that's lower affordability. Um but I think this is definitely something that um, yeah, this is something that's definitely on the list. Yeah. Can I ask you a like technical question about AMI? Maybe it's for you, Vernon. Do we define, is it, is it the median income in within the city or within like a slightly larger area?
It's the city we, and.
Yeah, the area compares with DC as well. That includes the city of Fall Church.
It's a city metropolitan area.
Yes, pristine metropolitan.
It's not Fall Church.
Other questions, comments from the planning?
Um while we're on the, the analysis, um just kudos to staff on putting that together. Um I had a couple like suggestions. I'm glad you're gonna add the AMI comparisons. So yeah, that's how, that I think that'll be really helpful. I think adding some sort of illustration or maybe even a table to that discussion. Like, there were a lot of numbers in the text that are written here that I think we could just put in the table. It would be pretty easy to understand. Um and then the takeaway, so just a formatting suggestion. Um I would also recommend moving this to come after the employment discussion in which, in this chapter. I feel like it's a little bit of a different thing than the rest of the chapter. So I would have all of the information that we got from the vendor um come first. And then this, I mean, you might even put like a different background or something to set it off visually. It's a, it's a different kind of thing, I think, than the preceding information in the chapter. So it should be, so. Um I'd also maybe include, you provided information on the share of workers in neighboring jurisdictions um who are able to live in those jurisdictions. So I think it might be helpful to include those percentages. Alexandria is seven percent, we're at three percent. City of Fairfax is three, City of Manassas Park is two, and City of Manassas is five. So just to sort of show where the city falls within the range of their like sized, somewhat like sized neighbors. Um there are a couple discrepancies in the numbers that you all had in your analysis and what we got from um the GME folks, whose names I'm forgetting at the moment. So I sent those to you by email. I can, I'm sure you can sort them out.
Yeah, we've, we've already fixed one. Um the uh one sixty four number, we have um twenty twenty two data. So SFI was um producing data from twenty twenty one and we pull.
So you have years more recent.
Yeah, so about me, to, you know, make sure we're consistent with the data that we're using in years, we went back and pulled the ACS data.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Um a little typo, page nine, you have hub, a nation hub. And then I had, I had some more substantive feedback on the strategies, actually, if I have time.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of like the main purpose of our feedback tonight. So um the one, um I'm really glad, first of all, thank you for adding the strategies, the sort of strategy topics of access and belonging, um transportation and climate sustainability. I think this is, it's really comprehensive. And within each of these areas, you've come up with like a really nice comprehensive, but still high level list of strategies that I think really will be useful to the city going forward. Um there was one, the the strategy that I think that's currently under the public infrastructure section, promote accessibility for all needs and abilities when providing city services for the city's growing population. I wondered if that would fit better under access and belonging now that you have it.
Yeah, we were back and forth with that too, and I I agree.
I think you could put it there.
Okay.
I mean, and it would round out that section a little more, that that one has three, so that would make it four. Um under the employment strategy section, the last one reads, um is the city evolves economically, promote policies that increase the supply of workforce housing? What we've all been talking about, um which I think I wholeheartedly agree with that. I was just curious, what do you mean by is the city evolves economically? What does that mean? Is it as we add more jobs, as we have different kinds of jobs? Like, what, what do you mean by evolves?
Yeah, yeah, as more jobs enter the city, whether, you know, there are small businesses or different industries, um just as we continue to grow our economy, our workforce continues to grow, make sure we can house the growing workforce.
Okay. That's helpful. I mean, I, I don't know if there's a way to rephrase it. It just seemed that that intro just felt red a little baby to me. So I mean, the way you said it there was a little more concrete. Um. Can I add one other thing, just since we're talking about that point? So given, um I feel like when, when we use the term, or you use the term workforce housing, like sometimes that means something very specific to people in terms of like eighty percent to a hundred and ten percent AMI or a hundred and twenty percent AMI. If it's, if it is that, i- is it, is it, is, I guess you're saying just for people who work in the city? Not as much like that specific bracket or is it that specific bracket?
So we were thinking more like affordable housing for the workforce. Um so it sounds like we might need a disclaimer as to what we're considering workforce housing.
I think you could rephrase that. You, you could just say. Promote policies that increase the supply of housing affordable to the city's workforce.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Just do that. So I can, it sounds still really, really easy to make, yeah. Um in the transportation section, the first strategy, expand transportation equity and access, promote transportation options that are accessible to all ages and kind of facilities. I was struck by the finding of that twenty seven percent of our population are residents under the age of twenty, many whom do not drive. So I just, I don't know if there's a way to kind of like include that. Maybe you don't have to have that particular fact, but maybe there's some wording about, like a lot, we're, we're designing these um uh accessible options for kids.
Yeah.
In many cases, my twelve year old's riding up to the campus all the time, you know. So like, I don't, I don't know if there's a way to include that, but that, that was striking to me. It's like more than a quarter of our population are, are under the age of twenty. Um, let's see. And climate and sustainability, um the strategy, the second strategy, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. As it reads, this can be done through the development of local jobs and workforce housing as well as first mile, last mile connections to public transportation. I wondered if you wanted to include a reference to active transportation specifically here to maybe work that term in. Uh and then the last kind of small wording thing, under changing conditions, update the city's demographic projections at least once every five years to maintain up to date baseline data to inform development decisions and initiatives. I might say development and policy decisions?
Okay. Like add addition.
That was it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we be more ambitious in updating of the information? Are we nimble and staffed enough? I mean, you know, this document will be finished to the stage when the council will be sticking its head into accessory dwelling units, between village, fields, potential housing, uh this is all the triangle. All those things are gonna happen, you know, not five years from now, but you know, five months from now. And in order to operationalize, you know, the documents, I wonder if, and I'm not suggesting that you have to do the bulk of the work, but it's communications channels as much as anything to pull elements out of this report and say, yeah, okay, let's talk about workforce housing. What does workforce housing mean to you? Well, to me, it means my son the cop. And to you, it means, you know, the woman who is making smoothies, it's smoothie king. You know, there's a huge band of variety, which is great. I mean, that, that is a true community, which has that variety in it. And yet, I mean, I think we're gonna have a community conversation of some vigor over providing accessory dwelling units especially, but also with pretty village and the others I mentioned, uh providing housing for AMIs that are below, well below sixty, fifty, forty. How much make, make it smoothies, it's smoothie king, but you know, we have a long way to go. We've got a breadth of information, the, the breadth of pipe housing to move. And in conclusion, it's, you know, I don't want to wait five years to find out. Well, we made some progress when we opened up, you know, Broad in Washington and Founders One and Madera, Founders Two and West Falls, you know, and the next, I mean, the schools are planning their budget next year already as if all those buildings are gonna be filled up with kids. So I feel like we need, we, I think it's us versus them, there needs to be a counter uh of information that says we did open these and we did get this composition of residents and it has helped us in affordability down to, pick a number, you know, seventy percent AMI. But below seventy, we really, we gotta do a lot more.
Yeah, well, currently planning, um we produce, you know, or um work with forecasting cog during the year. But we also have other reports that we put out um that deal with the changing nature of housing, city or population, like the five year outlook. And every year we put out the community profile. It's good insight into what we're doing here at the city as well as like citizens, population and all that. Um it sounds like maybe like interim reports was kind of the question. And and I think the community profile that's published yearly and recently, the five year outlooks are good examples of those types of reports that Danny produces. But maybe we need to take a look at some additional ones.
Well, and that uh housing produces a annual affordable housing.
Right, that's, that's the document that I'm thinking of. That I just pulled a copy of it out of a pile of papers at home and I thought, you know what? This, this is something that we all ought to carry around in our best pocket because, and an updated version of it. Um because, as I say, you know, we're gonna have a vigorous community conversation over um accessory dwelling units and, you know, all those other topics too. And everybody agrees that just because you work here, you should be able to live here. Everybody agrees with that. And that's fine, you know, having data underneath it to show progress that we've made and what we need to do to keep making progress is gonna be essential to council moving the ball on this and making.
I I have a question about where, where some of that, there was like, we're talking about lots of different types of data, but the data about like, here we're adding, we're adding like these affordable units at this AMI bracket versus these at another AMI bracket. Like when I want to find stuff like that, I email Kayleen and she sends me her like very organized ADU spreadsheet and then like digs up the numbers for the things that are coming online or other things from, from different places. And so I just like toss it all in an Excel, bunch of Excel tabs and it's, you know, no one will look at it. Um is, is there a way, especially if, if we're going, you know, if we come up with goals, that if you get to track progress on the goals, to have, I guess, a way to track that like a little bit more consistently? Um if you were, because that could even just be like a, a snapshot of, you know, here's like units coming on and offline. Um are, I think right now there's just, there's some like different formatting for different things and, um but the reason I bring that up is because I think then you could say like, okay, six months from now, where are we? Twelve months, you know, where are we gonna be six months from now? Where are we gonna be twelve months from now? Um and that's a big thing that we're trying to emphasize in the, in our report is just how many, it's like we're adding things, but we're like losing more than we're adding. So it's like, we're like getting these ninety nine units, which is awesome. And then, but between now and twenty forty, like we're losing a hundred and fifty. losing more than we're adding. So it's like, we're like getting these ninety-nine units, which is awesome. And then, but between now and twenty forty, like we're losing a hundred and fifty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I think especially having like visual ways to track that, I think is really kind of, it's compelling, especially when you're looking at something like this. So I'm just thinking about, um, ways to make that more, um, visible or just have those those data sources like talk to each other.
When, um, I can, the affordable living policy work group is is considering, one of one of the recommendations they're they're considering is whether, um, the city should develop like a dashboard.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That would sort of show, yeah, basically exactly what you're talking about. Um, what was the example that was shared? Was it out there in Arlington?
It was Arlington.
Arlington, yeah.
Arlington's another very, very fancy one. And we're not gonna probably do what Arlington has. I don't know that we have those resources right out, but I think we could do maybe a
I'm a believer, yeah.
a big version of something, getting Kayleen's spreadsheet and uh viewable in a public way.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
That would be.
I mean, that could be a recommendation on.
Yeah, we're a little bit hesitant around that. I'll think we have time to do it, but that's.
Yeah, right.
Well, I I I will say, I will say regarding the affordable living policy, it updates the policy, the the work group will update the policy.
Yeah, I think.
The policy, um, is what we base our annual affordable housing report on. So if there are recommendations or requests for specific types of data to be tracked over the next five years until the next policy update, that would be a part and that would be a function of the affordable, the affordable housing report, the annual, we could, we could.
So even if it's not some sort of like Lisbon, like live updating dashboard or something, city website, like maybe it's it's like a new table or something that's included in the business or uh.
More more comprehensive data tracking in the affordable housing report. And and you know, there there's no reason why we couldn't develop. It's just a matter of like political and uh political capacity to do so.
Staff time, yeah, it's it's a prioritization, so I think why you not do this.
It shows the tension between a five-year plan and the dynamism that's happening in the city. You're right, every single bit great. Other comments from commissions from either either commission or questions or? Um, as I said, I thought, you know, I I you've seen this before, it's it's uh getting improved every time. Um, I thought that the top gear has been accessibility and belonging, the gap analysis, all of those are great, great additions. Um, I also like, I think you had before, but the description why demographics matter, the complaint is such an such an obvious thing to to articulate, but I'm glad, um, that that was in there. One very minor comment, um, early in the doc, I think on page five, there is a um, a comment said something like metropolitan Washington council governments has designated the city as an activity center or something like that. I think it's important to point out that this is based on what the city wants, that it's not the council government saying we're an activity center. It's based on our main policies or our complaints or like that. So it's not, it's not a regional body telling us what we're doing. It's it's coming from the bottom up. Uh, and the other minor thing, um, I mean, I know what exponential smoothing mean. I don't know what exponential. Maybe explain what that means somewhere.
You know, it's very.
Um, I wouldn't know if I can figure what it was, so. Any other comments from anybody from either commission?
I had one, I I just wanted to highlight the public comment that we received from Mr. Gresko. He asked for the counts of, um, housing units broken up by single family, townhouse, multifamily to be included in the, I I agree, they're not in the document. I couldn't find them. So I think there's a section you can put it in, um, right on page seven, under housing trends, that end of that first paragraph. You could just add the other counts for the, you cite the thirty-six-hundred go up jack, right at the end of that first paragraph. As of twenty-two, twenty-two, well, over half of housing units in the city, thirty-six-hundred added sixty-sixty-five-hundred were multifamily. So you have the multifamily units, just add the townhouses and single family, the remainder of whatever, blah, blah, blah. Just put the numbers in and that that way, um, it's preserved, 'cause that was useful in the previous iteration of this chapter, to have those numbers to some discussions that we had about T zones.
Yeah.
And I know you can get them, but it's it's nice just to have them here.
Yeah, agreed.
Anything else? Mr. Steve, is Andy on your end?
Um, I I would just like to, uh, point out one thing, um, I, for lack of other locations on the agenda to to bring it up. But I know one of our commissioners was interested in kind of approaching the topic of potential collaboration, and I just wanted to make sure that that opportunity was presented while we still had, uh, this joint session.
Can we, that's part of it?
Uh, well, I just wanna make sure we had, we still had the opportunity while we were still kind of in the joint session.
Uh, to do, well, well, we had to, uh, talk internally about meeting, uh, engaging the city, uh, with the planning commission about some of these, uh, longer-term goals with regard to, um, the city council priorities, particularly strategies, uh, for three and four under housing, uh, diversifying housing. Um, it's something that we certainly support on the housing commission, but it's certainly something that needs to be done in collaboration with planning uh, in terms of moving forward, you know, there's, it's a pretty broad set of issues, uh, diversifying housing within the city. And we think we wanna do that, I think, in collaboration with, uh, the planning commission.
I think if I allows a board, that's in the plan, which we talked, this is what we talked about pretty much every meeting. It dominates a lot of the conversations we have for all these groups. I would never suggest we do that tonight.
No, no, no.
I think there's, there's absolutely, I think, speak for myself, I think speak for others, that this is a lot of aptitude, so.
Good, can I, in that vein, could I ask a question? I should know the answer to, but I, the affordable living policy word group, whatever it's called. What, uh, what is that and what is its role relative to, you know, what housing commission does, what planning commission is doing and what Commissioner Hira at every meeting that he's able to attend, you know, that's where it should be about, is affordable housing. Is is that group, uh, and you for the kind of coordination and communication you're talking about?
The affordable, the affordable living policy, um, I I would say the best way to describe it is it up, it updates housing, Department of Housing Human Services housing goals for the next five years. Um, it it dictates the way we kind of organize our workflow, uh, similar to the way the comprehensive plan dictates planning teams workflow. And these two documents, the comprehensive plan and the policy, the the affordable living policy speak to each other and pull from each other, but they're kind of in their own stovepipe in terms of the planning commission does the comprehensive plan.
Well, the, but the affordable living policy also will help guide city council and it's policymaking and decision-making, decisively.
Mm-hmm.
It is, it is a work group, it is a, it is a public work group, uh, of which citizens will be able to contribute thoughts and recommendations for the purpose of housing for the next five years. So.
And living, so it is called a portable living policy.
And living, um, so, um, I I would say that that's kind of the distinction between the two, the two documents and the two, the two roles. Now, the the housing commission, um, has a somewhat similar mission in terms of creating goals. Um, but I, from what I understand, their charter is to, uh, manage and review a discrete set of policy, policies. Uh, whereas the affordable policy at large kind of dictates what housing human services and and what our workflow, uh, per view is for the next five years.
It's a broader, it's a, it's a broader look also. It's affordable living, 'cause it's like, it, you know, focuses on 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 affordable housing, but kind of looking at a broader view too of how everything interacts and how, what 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 our specific goals and recommendations should be. So there is some overlap, obviously. So we'll be using the housing commission's report that we just, um, talked about tonight, um, to help guide some of our discussions. So there is definitely some overlap in all of this. There's like, there's overlap here and there has to be, but synergy. But sometimes you feel like you're maybe reinventing the wheel too much, which is why I think that database of, you know, having having information more easily accessible is a good idea in general.
Well, one of the suggestions Commissioner Hira made was that we should hire a consultant who would be a sort of, I don't know, czar of all of this. Which is an interesting idea and I'm sure has some merit, but also closes the door to yet another cook in the kitchen. And I I don't have, I don't have an opinion on it. I'm just saying that when it comes up, I'd, I'd like some policy working group somewhere to have an intelligent response
Yeah.
as to whether that's a good thing, necessary, superfluous, um, just as so we can, you know, check that box and move on.
Just to make one other sort of clarifying comment about sort of the housing commission wanting to have more collaboration or or talk, connect more with the planning commission. I think specifically, you know, we have, we we talk a lot about our affordable housing, like that's sort of squarely within our wheelhouse. We participate in discussions of housing-related zoning things, but I think wanting to have a better understanding of where we can partner specifically in in things that aren't just like affordable housing, um, I think that's what we're interested in learning more about.
We love letters from commissions of, like anytime we like, we had T zones, I don't know that we got a, like, um,
Yeah, you got, you said multiple letters.
Yeah, like that, I don't.
Multiple letters.
We got a lot of letters, I mean, so we're working on that topic, so I don't remember, don't remember this specific one.
Yeah.
But yeah, those, those are really helpful just to hear from the commission on these, those sort of policy issues, recommendations, zoning changes, like what your perspective is on those things. And help inform our discussions and decisions.
It's also important for us to hear your, kind of learn from you, because when we're talking about affordable housing, I mean, obviously, there's there's the affordable housing, housing at specific AMIs, but then there's also, if you increase your, um, overall diversity of housing stock, in the end, you help you help all levels and trying to really understand how that works and working with you might might help us kind of understand it more to be able to explain to ourselves, understand it, but explain it to other people more when we're trying to, yeah, yeah.
Makes perfect, perfect sense. Um, and I may have to say we can commit to finding time, however it works, work with staff to figure out time where we can have that conversation.
Yeah.
But I think you're in great, you're doing that.
Yeah, definitely wanna add a bunch of meetings to the calendar, but I think just, even even if we just have like a couple of roll engagements to understand, like, how can we contribute to some of these goals? And then we can come back and we can work on, work on with ourselves, so.
I've learned a lot here over the past.
Awesome.
Sure, sure, yeah. Okay. Thank you all very much. I really appreciate you just sticking around and
Yeah, thank you.
Do your comments and insights.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You doing the night?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on with the, uh, the next item, the receiving petitions. Mr. Drager, you have a couple of written correspondence?
Um, no, Mr. Chair, I didn't receive any written correspondence for, um, non-agenda items. We're gonna record to save the public comment for the demographics.
Right.
Item that was mentioned earlier. Uh, for for those in the audience, I know we have two public hearings, uh, coming up. If you wish to speak, we have, uh, speaker slips right here in this white basket. Uh, if I could ask you to fill one out and, uh, bring it up to me if you'd like to speak. You'll have three minutes per turn. Um, I haven't received any yet, but so maybe some folks in time to do it.
Thank you for connecting us with the committee. Those are very, very useful.
Uh, we can hear comments first be- before the staff presentation or?
Do you wanna do comments, um, on the items, when, after the staff presentation or?
I don't know which, what the, the, or the, or the presentation.
I think if it's a public hearing, you could do it from a call, right?
Exactly, we give the option to the speaker. So if they wanna speak now, that's that's usually welcome. If they wanna hold until the item, that's also welcome.
Okay. Hold it until the end, excellent.
Okay. Any suggestions?
Well, please, we can see what Mr. Henderson wants to do.
I don't know.
Did you wanna speak now or after the staff report?
Perfect. So you're gonna hold the comment until after the staff report, but preferably before the planning commission's discussion.
Yeah. So no other wanna speak now or after the?
Um, I prefer to do it now, if that's okay.
Now, sure, absolutely.
Right. Just talk.
Yeah.
Um, no, my name is Janice Johnson and I'm a resident of Falls Church City. Um, my husband and I, Robert Tark, we've been here since two thousand six. Yeah, two thousand six. And, um, the reason I'm here, I'm not even sure like where we are in the course of the meeting, but the reason we're here is the concern over the floodplain decision. And we understand that, well, that's something that we've been looking at forever in terms of how to get out of the floodplain. So we understand that, um, FEMA makes the decision as to whether or not we would be in the floodplain or not. What we're concerned about is that, um, we received a letter a couple of weeks back saying that there were changes and that, um, there are residents that are being pulled out of the floodplain. And what we're concerned about is that we remember when there was flooding about four, five years ago and on Sher, is it Sherwood? Sherwood Road and it was a river. We didn't have that. We didn't have any of those problems. We didn't have any flooding in our basement. Am I correct? Um, we didn't, no problems at all, but even still, the city did come through, made changes, um, in the area where we are, right at, um, Trail.
No, Cavalier Park.
Cavalier Park, right in that area, but still, it was crazy on Sherwood Road. I mean, it wa- it was ridiculous how much water they had. We also understood that they were, um, I think the piping was, um, maybe two or three feet, um, from the surface. There was a lot going on. So we're not understanding what was done that removed them from the floodplain, where they don't have to pay that extra FEMA, where FEMA said, okay. We don't know what the city reported to FEMA to make these changes. And if FEMA, and if anything was done or reported to FEMA to make these changes for these folks, then what needs to happen on West Westmore Road?
And to take it back on that, so they did a flood, uh, smoke test through the pipe there, which is, we never got the results.
Yeah, we never knew.
On that. They said, if you see smoke coming out, then it would mean the pipe broke.
And we didn't have any, so we're looking at it like we don't know what's going on. And now people are being pulled out, whom we're looking at like, why? So that was it.
Thank you. Other comments?
Oh, can I just add one more thing? Uh, my only other thing is that, um, I apologize, I'm coming from another meeting and I just happened to get here at seven thirty, so I missed like the whole setup. But I really would have wished that, um, since we have so many citizens here, that we would have gone first. Because now we have people who had concerns, they're gone, they can't stay for the marathon meeting. So I just wish that that was the case. That's it.
Please, thank you. Okay, other correspondence?
Ju- just to point out, I I think there will be a time to sort of address those comments. It's when the item will come up on the agenda. We've obviously got our staff expert on floodplains here with us tonight. Um, and so if we can't get to it, uh, if we can't answer the questions part of the meeting tonight, I think Jeff can certainly make himself available, uh, to answer questions after another meeting.
Thank you for that. All right, let's move on then to our action items. Uh, seven A, comprehensive plan amendment, Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District Public Hearing. Again, a item we've seen before a couple of times. Um, we're not looking for formal action for us today, so, Mr. Drager?
All right, thank you, uh, Chair and members of the commission. I'll briefly set up the item, uh, before I turn it over to our 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 lead miner again. I'm in base now, she's got two items on tonight's agenda. Uh, I wanna thank her for her time in getting materials ready and being here, uh, tonight to present them. I'll talk them through with you. Uh, as you mentioned, uh, this is, uh, TR twenty-four oh five, resolution to amend chapter three of the City of Falls Church's comprehensive plan to add the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District. Uh, so this would be a, uh, what is proposed is a comprehensive plan change to give proper recognition to, uh, the continuing contributions, the past and continuing contributions of the Tanner Hill community, to the City of Falls Church, uh, and the larger community around it. Um, this item has been before you multiple times as a work session item. You last saw it, it's listed there on line ten as a a work session, uh, in your April seventeen, twenty twenty-four meeting. Uh, there have been, um, I mean, some changes to the chapter since then, which are highlighted throughout the report as well as in the chapter text. Uh, this item is before you for action tonight, so staff is asking that you hold this as a public hearing and then make recommendations back to council. Uh, in terms of, uh, schedule going forward, uh, uh, council is scheduled to hold a work session on this item at their June third meeting, uh, which is a regular work session night for them. uh council is scheduled to hold a work session on this item at their June third meeting, uh which is a regular work session night for them. Uh, and then to uh hold their own public hearing and consider final action uh at their regular meeting on June twenty fourth. Um, so that is uh by way of purpose and background. And now I'll turn it over to um Assembly Base Moore for the staff report.
Thank you. All right. Um, tonight's plan commission is requested to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to City Council on the proposed Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Again, this is a comprehensive Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Chapter Three, which is our Community Character Appearance and Design Section of the plan. The Planning Commission last reviewed this item during an April seventeen work session. Updates to staff report and the draft um of the district uh since April seventeenth are highlighted and correct. Um, tonight's staff recommends approval of the proposed motion. I just want to go over some of those updates since the Planning Commission last reviewed this item in work session on April seventeen. So again, the Planning Commission last last reviewed um the draft Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District Comprehensive Plan Amendment during the work session on April seventeenth. The Planning Commission was supportive of the revised plan and the research and engagement that changed the plan. A revision was requested for page four of the draft and the reference to the map on the state page, this revision has been made. Um, additionally, the following revisions have been made following that work session and prior to Planning Commission final consideration tonight. So to the authority of the plan section, um the Comprehensive Plan Amendment will be adopted by resolution only. The language regarding adoption by ordinance has since been removed as the district is not regulatory and this is something we've been saying all along. That's honorific. So we've got some feedback and it's the legislation is resolution. Um, so that's reflected here and also in the draft chapter. We also on page or line thirty one, you'll see um under African American Commercial Properties, uh we also included George Robinson's Barber Shop in the list of properties in the section. On line thirty three, we have a new biography on Ollie Tanner. I encourage you all to take a look at that biography. Um, Ollie was a local civic leader and you can find his biography on page four of the draft chapter. And finally, we also have an appendix A which turns out the planning process and um public engagement uh for these projects. So I just want to go down to line forty eight, which is the Historical Commission request. Um, so almost a year ago on April seventeenth, twenty twenty three, the City of Falls Church's Historical Commission submitted a memo um to the City Council to establish a Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District. The memo included background information on Tanner Hill, potential boundaries of the proposed district and notable sites that could be included. Now I'm going to move to page six of the staff report. Here we're looking at district geography. Um, so the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District includes a cluster of historic and cultural sites currently located in Tanner Hill that are significant to the original community. Uh, the following sites are included as part of the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District. These are Charles and Mary Elizabeth Tanner's House, uh Joseph and Mary Tanner's Home Outline, the Henderson House, the Tanner Hill Civil Rights Monument, the zigzag sculpture, the Tanner Hill Historic Site Marker, the Galway Methodist Church and a marker that's located here by the Gal- or at the Galway Methodist Church. Um, and I also want to highlight the cemetery is included on the map, but the cemetery is located in Fairfax County, just along the line here. Harriet Foot Turnerland, written in stone walking trail. Also the Women's History Walk in there and that's reflected on the map as well and a rolling road marker. If you go to the following page, you can take a look at the map really quick. Um, so key in this since the last Planning Commission work session, you'll see that the Women's History um Walking Trail is noted in pink. Um, so there's some dash purple lines. Um, and then there's the P right in the middle of those dash purple lines. Um, so written in stone is purple and then the dash pink lines are the Women's History Walk. Um, we also have future murals depicted on the draft map and those are also in pink. So there's one um by the East Building. Um, you'll also see one um that's along like Wallace and then there's one um, I believe up by the Henderson House. Um, also, I just want to highlight that um we have fixed the the boundary. Had a little bit of the yellow outline um trickling into Fairfax County and that's since been revised to reflect the city boundary um in our our Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District in the City of Falls Church. So now I want to move on to line one sixteen and here we have our historic figures. So the draft amendment highlights several key leaders and historic figures associated with the Tanner Hill community. Um, brief biographies are included along with connections to the historic areas and related sites. Um, the draft amendment includes the following leaders and historical figures biographies. Charles and Mary Elizabeth Tanner, E. B. Henderson, Eliza Henderson, Frederick Foot Junior, George and Harriet Bryce, Harriet Foot Turner, Joseph Tanner, Louisa Henderson, Ollie Tanner, which I see did not make it into this list as he was recently added, and then Mary Ellen Henderson. Now moving on to line one seventy six, this is where we talk about our activating the district strategies and there are the following. Uh, partner with the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation to promote the district, promote heritage tourism, implement historic and cultural place making projects, expand public art efforts in the district, explore gateway features and branding for the district, elevate the district in entitlement projects and site plan reviews, explore potential archaeological significance, um archaeological surveys for buildings older than fifty years related to Tanner Hill history. So this is nineteen ten um to nineteen seventy four. And then additions to formal oral histories. Moving on briefly to public engagement. Um, so public engagement around the project began with the presentation of the draft map and outline to both the Historical Commission and the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation in fall of twenty twenty three. Since additional boards and commissions um as well as the Historical Commission and the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation have reviewed the draft amendment to read February twenty twenty four. Um, specific dates for each of these meetings can be found in the timing section of this report. Um, information regarding this project has been shared as part of the city's newsletter, the Focus Project, and updates also um continue to be posted on Project One page. On line one or two oh three talks about our library pop ups. Um, these were hosted on March twenty eighth and then April sixth in collaboration with um staff from Mary Riley Styles Library. Big thank you to them for posting us for our pop ups. And I also just want to highlight that we're going to have one of the Tanner Hill Historic Site on May twenty third, so next week. Um, and we'll have a little um self guided walking tour of the district. It'll have our map and then corresponding sites and what you can find on those sites. And we'll just have information about the project and the district and and the whole process.
What time is it?
Um, four thirty to six thirty, so after the workday. Um, and I just want to highlight um on two thirty two, line two thirty two, we have a note about Nova Parks. You'll see um at your desk that we did get a comment letter and this afternoon from Nova Parks um on the Tanner Hill District. Uh, we also had received one previously that was shared with the Planning Commission from Fairfax County and their Heritage Resources Department. Um, we had also met with the Fairfax County Heritage Resources Department back in um February of twenty twenty four. Um, and we have a list of improvements made in response to public input um from line two thirty seven all the way down to line two sixty three. And I just want to end with um talking a little bit about timing. So again, we kicked off this process um in November with a um outline meeting with the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation and then right after we went to the Historical Commission in December to review that outline and the draft map. Um, we kicked off the City Council in mid January, so January sixteenth. Since we've done some public engagement with the Planning Commission, Historical Commission, Economic Development Authority, the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation and Arts and Communities, as well as some um general public engagement at the library. Um, we visited the Planning Commission for a work session on April seventeen. And then um here we are on May fifteenth uh for a public hearing and a recommendation to council. On June third, we'll be going back to City Council for a work session. And then on June twenty fourth, we'll be going to City Council for a public hearing and their final consideration um of the district. That's all for me. Moving forward to keep up.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Baymore. Um, yeah, as I said, have you seen this before at the parade move to actions tonight? Um, can you clarify one thing you said? Did you receive comments from Nova Parks today, Mr. Mayor?
He didn't.
Okay.
Yes.
Was that the street? Was that in the package?
We just received one today. It was like later today.
And we just got into it. It didn't make the package.
Yeah.
Is there anything substantive?
Letters to support and just encourage um, you know, coordination as as actions happen, whether it's new art or um programming that Nova Parks remains in the loop with everything and that we continue to coordinate with them regarding tomorrow.
Nova Parks supports the special district designation of this area.
Good. So this is a public hearing, so um wanted to see if we have any con- any uh plenty here to speak on this. Mr. Train.
Received one speaker slip. Uh, Mr. Speaker Ed Henderson.
Okay. Okay, um, my name is Ed Henderson. I'm the founder of the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation. Um, I've been working with Emily um Baymore. It's been a pleasure working with her. Uh, and uh I was part of uh I'm the vice chair of the Historic Commission. And uh when we put forth the uh memo, um, I didn't think it would take this long. The wheels of bureaucracy grind. And uh, you know, it's we we we've done our due diligence. We've been doing all kinds of work uh in this area to tell our story. Um, from the monument to the walking trail to um historic site, uh the stampings in the sidewalk. Um, and one of the reasons why I thought this could be easy was because you have wayfinding signs that actually say that this is the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District. I mean, it's it's already stamped. Um, but I think that the work that Emily has done and the placing it into the comprehensive plan is foundational to making this work. And um, you know, we've done so much, including, you know, like the festival is going to be in the park in June and things like that. I think that um I'm hoping that uh you all will um given you a sign of approval this evening and moving on. I was hoping that it would be done before the festival this year. But uh, June eighth is uh the festival and the plan goes before the council on the twenty fourth, so there goes that. But that's all basically I have to say. But I'd also like to uh point out uh there are two tenors here and I don't know if you all would like to say something.
I've spoken with Emily and a couple of others um about the uh request that going forward in the city embracing so much of the history. We appreciate all that you're doing and look forward to continuing to uh maintain the historic uh memories and history of Tanner Hill.
And and one other thing, uh, the oral histories, uh, we did Oral History Project in two thousand and two um conducted by the History Department at Virginia Tech. And I have the donated those to the library. So those are in the history, um, the Virginia Room and the library as well. It's um, and uh there are some things that are just that aren't um um oral histories, but are rather documentation of program, uh past festivals and things like that that we've done also. So I think that um our um additions to the collection in the Virginia Room is also a part of uh what we're doing for the community as far as this.
Thank you for the comments. And thank you for all your everything for the city. I'm sorry it takes so long. The wheels do grind silly sometimes, but the the public engagement is important. And I think you're right, the cementing this in in our city's um plan and these these government documents is really important, so. The point is very well taken. We can all we can all, Mr. Mayor. Any other um comments, Mr. Train?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, so we can be a formal action here tonight. Uh, I want to open up to commissioners for any expressions for staff.
Uh, just want to talk the tremendous substance that you've built in this chapter. Uh, is there a thought that we can pull out, you know, the deep history and the uh website things without, you know, the line, you know, all those other things that are in the documents that we can some someplace online.
Well, I will say the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation's website has a lot of history about the Tanner Hill community on it. And I encourage you all to take a look at it if you haven't already. Um, I think a lot of the history does look there. We do have obviously some in, you know, our chapter that we're adding or getting them to the Comprehensive Plan. Um, and you can find more information on our webpage. We haven't discussed a a webpage for the district itself, but maybe that's a good follow up activity.
Well, the reason I bring it up, that's good. Uh, the reason I bring it up, every time the Economic Development Authority, you know, gets together and discusses this, they all uh express excitement about the heritage tourism component of it and they have paid a consultant to build the visit Falls Church website, which we all know about. And so either a a link off that website to the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation materials or and or some subset of what you would be helpful in building up a tourism, you know, personality for the district.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to sit in um with economic development staff and the team that they're using for that website. And we talked about the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District. The zip was in the pipeline um when they were getting to work with the the new website. Um, so I would imagine it'll it'll be up there. We've been in contact with the EDO along the way about this project. And then the EDA also reviewed it, so it's it's definitely on the radar.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Um, the file name of this um document is indicated it's version twenty seven.
Yeah, there's a lot of room.
I mean, I I I understand why Mr. Henderson might be surprised that this took took as long as it did, but I guess it's uh good things come to those who wait. Um, I I feel like it's a really comprehensive history uh that showcases the contributions of the Tanner Hill community to the City of Falls Church. And it's with obviously the result of a ton of research and engagement with the community and it's going to be a really great resource for us going forward. So I'm really grateful um for your efforts on this, Ms. Baymore, and for the community's engagement. And I'm looking forward to having the final.
Thank you.
Since we already have the signs up, is there any place we can have a ribbon cutting when this is
Yeah.
when this is officially passed?
Ooh, I like that idea.
Well, and that relates to Fairfax uh area too. I mean, is that in Dallius District? Anyway, we ought to get together with Fairfax County Board and see if we could do a visibility of that.
Yeah, I like that. We um have been connecting with the county about our little informational pop up in May and made the one that's coming up next week. Um, and have invited them to attend a pop by and see all the work they've been doing.
I think it should be a good opportunity for both jurisdictions to join arms and reminds me there was a intersection improvement that we did on the north side of town that Chairman, or the board member Faust was very involved in. They did a very Fairfax, you know, anything they do, they do it big. And we had a nice ribbon cutting for that, you know, and community participation because it was a property that had long into discussion and uh even longer than this one. Uh, so it's a good opportunity to make nice with like call attention to something that's call attention to something that's important to us.
We love it. Mr. Stevens? Thank you. Stevens.
So, yeah, I I think, I appreciate all the work you put into it and the additional information, I really, I saw how much work went into that. And I do appreciate all the comments and the family being here as well, I think it's very important and I think it's kind of, yes, it did take a long time, but I think it was worth the wait to have the amount of information that's in there in a very easy and approachable way for anybody who visits the website. And I think the website in conjunction with the EDA is a great idea to kind of move this even further. So, thank you, and I'm looking forward to seeing it finalized in some kind of fashion.
Agreed, Orion, so I think we're ready for a motion. Anybody who wishes to make this?
I can do it.
Somebody can read it.
I can read it.
I can read it. Let's go.
Uh, let's see, uh, this is TR twenty four dash zero five, resolution to amend chapter three of the City of Falls Church's comprehensive plan to add the Tender Hill Historic and Cultural District. Whereas Virginia Code section fifteen dot two dash two 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 three requires that the city have a comprehensive plan for the city that acts to guide and accomplish coordinated development. And whereas section seventeen dot zero four of the city charter makes the planning commission responsible for preparation of the city's comprehensive plan. And whereas section seventeen dot zero six of the city charter enables the planning commission to prepare and adopt individual components of the comprehensive plan. And whereas section fifteen dot two dash two 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 eight of the state code also gives the city council the authority to grant final approval to comprehensive plan changes previously approved by the planning commission. And whereas the draft comprehensive plan amendment tells the history of the Tender Hill community and its leadership in the civil rights movement. And whereas the draft comprehensive plan amendment outlines historic and cultural sites within Tender Hill and the biographies of historic figures associated with these sites. And whereas the draft comprehensive plan amendment incorporates a Tender Hill Historic and Cultural District map that depicts where these historic and cultural sites can be found in the City of Falls Church. And whereas the draft comprehensive plan amendment establishes district activation strategies the City of Falls Church can utilize to support the district and build upon heritage of tourism, placemaking and archaeological efforts. Now therefore be it resolved by the planning commission of the City of Falls Church that I, the Tender Hill Historic and Cultural District, which is attached hereto, is hereby adopted by the planning commission as an added section to the chapter three of the comprehensive plan adopted in two thousand and five. And II, that the planning commission recommends that city council grant final approval of the right amendment to chapter three of comprehensive plan.
Second. Second, Mr. Duncan. Can you roll ball a little please, Mr. Train?
Mr. Rithlunder?
Yes.
Ms. Koma?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Pointez?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion.
Thank you all very much, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
All right, our next action item is for the floodplain map update public hearing. Uh, we already had some comments on this, and probably was able to stick around for this. Mr. Stotter?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'm happy to set out this item before I turn it over to our lead staffer on this one, Mr. Jeff Rubin. Uh, so the item that's before you for a public hearing in action tonight is TO twenty four dash oh seven, ordinance to amend zoning map of the City of Falls Church by altering the floodplain overlay district boundaries to be consistent with the floodplain boundaries set by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, and the National Flood Plane Insurance Program. You all had previously looked at zoning text and and councils subsequently adopted, took action and adopted the the text of the floodplain updates in the city ordinance. Now what's being reviewed is specifically the map, that's what's in front of you. Council has formally referred this out to you and has requested a response from you more later than May seventeenth, so this is your last opportunity to make recommendation to them. Staff is recommending adoption of the proposed motion, which is for a positive recommendation back to council. This group had last reviewed these materials during your May first work session, and as noted online, it's twenty twenty one. There have been no changes to the report since that work session. So that's my setup, but with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jeff Rubin.
Thank you, Mr. Stotter, hello commissioners, hello again, I should say. I'm gonna go a little rogue, I'm not gonna talk about what you just said first, and then I'll get back to this. We, as you guys heard in in our, this is I think the fourth time that I'm speaking to you in in our capacity. Most of the public response was, wait, is our, how does our structure in the floodplain, or is our property, is our parcel in the floodplain? And we don't have that information, frankly, that it's, then that has been the crux of the majority of the issues that we've experienced, that I've at least been getting feedback on. So yesterday, well, yesterday and today, the city sent out just about two hundred letters, and they all say essentially the city is going to be engaging in a program to and engaging a program with an engineering company to have all two hundred-ish property or structures in the floodplain surveyed, to get elevation certificates for all of them. The new maps are on a new data, meaning a new mathematical like representation of the earth's like elevation and all that stuff. So it's going to match apples to apples instead of apples to oranges, and and they're all going to be uniform, complete. I'll be working with these engineers, you know, actively to make sure, or the surveyors actively to make sure that they follow all, you know, the same rigor and level of rigor because some elevation certificates are not filled out the same generally. Uh, we get different levels of accuracy, so this is all going to be complete, comprehensive, and we found some extra ARPA money that became available just by happenstance, and so we're gonna be surveying hopefully all two hundred-ish houses or structures in the next three months or so. And all those residents or owners or what have you will be getting a copy of the elevation certificate for those structures around the end of the year, that is the intent. So that was just a, and and I think that was mentioned here, like, why are these houses coming out of the floodplain and other ones going in? It's been by and large the parcels that are being, that are now, you know, it was a couple feet in or a couple feet out, and now it's adjusting. And so we want to really identify the structures so that we can have a more focused outreach. We can, we can start doing resilience planning based on specific structures, whether that be in a large grant program for elevating projects, which is something that only a jurisdiction can apply for, not individual residents, or it could be, there's a variety of things moving forward. Uh, but I I think it's, I'm really, really excited about this, and I think it is a great response to most of the feedback we got. All right, I'm unroging. All right, so we are looking at the zoning map amendment, as we've talked about a couple times so far. As as Mr. Stotter mentioned, nothing has changed since the the last time we spoke about this. This is, we made sure that we had identified the proper addresses, and again, these are parcels because we don't have the data that is incoming hopefully by the end of this year. And so we are just looking at addresses, and that is for said parcels, and I invite any questions you guys have because I think we've talked about this quite a bit at this point. I won't keep you guys here too too late.
Thank you very much. Yes, we had talked about this. I remember at the beginning, when we first started talking about it, it seemed pretty straightforward. To me, obviously, it's become very complex and lots and lots of questions. It is interesting how the the thematic confusion arises, I can appreciate the complexities you've had to deal with. This is still a, this is a public hearing, so, Mr. Rubin, do you have anybody else here who's here to speak on this item?
I didn't receive any more speaker slips, is there anyone else that wants to speak? No, Mr. Jim.
Okay. All right, it'll go up to you commissioners for comments or questions to stay. Mr. Train.
I have some quick questions.
Yeah.
I'm I'm excited about the survey. What I'm not, what I don't understand about it, maybe you mentioned it and just didn't get it, is are you surveying all the properties that have a structure on them? Okay, and then you're surveying the structure and the elevations of those structures, or are you surveying the lands leading up to that structure?
No, structures.
All right.
Because the NFIP, the Inflated Insurance, National Flood Plan Insurance Program, only insured structures and principal structures on on residential parcels at least. Uh, and so we are ju, it'll just be focusing on those, so it'll, yeah.
I think that's really helpful, I think that will alleviate a lot of the comments too that we had heard.
Exactly.
So I think that's, that's great.
Yeah, I think it's a fantastic piece of of these newly identified funds and whatnot, I'm so excited.
Yes. So I'm in the floodplain, so I received that letter today, and I read it quickly before it came, but I thought it said that um, the survey would be done for any property in the floodplain that the city does not have data for.
Yes, that, so you.
So we already, if you already have data, you're not gonna provide an elevation certificate? It wouldn't be also.
That, well, that is how that reads. The, so again, we have about two hundred properties, two hundred parcels and whatnot with a with structure on them. A hundred and fifty, we only have about fifty elevation certificates. Uh, so we sent out the hundred and fifty tranche of hundred and fifty letters, you and I assume being one of them, given that you got that letter. And I looked, I went back to the, to check to see if we had the funds to just collect the other fifty. The in, the surveyors are already out there, we're already getting a great discount because they can go boom, 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 boom. Given that the datum changed, and given that not all elevation certificates are filled out equally or with equal quality, it seems like the logical thing to, you know, investigate who gave you the extra fifty, and it seems like it to all parties involved was a no-brainer. So we then updated that to say we're we're getting all of them and send that to those last fifty or so.
Okay.
Uh, so it is for all properties.
That's great.
Yeah, so I I didn't think the mean significantly changed, so yeah, we should get all uniform unless people opt out, which is, you know, stated in the letters.
Yeah, we don't have our elevation certificate, I don't know what it is, I mean, we, it's FEMA site set in the flood insurance letter that we got, but, um, I don't, I have no certificate myself, so this will be very helpful for homeowners, and I believe the letter also indicated that there would be no sort of negative consequences during the survey, can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, um, uh, the, for for someone that has flood insurance currently, an elevation certificate will not increase their flood insurance rate, their flood insurance premium, it will either maintain or it will decrease. That has been a a commitment made by FEMA to us. That's that's, that's kind of the end of that, frankly.
I mean, I know this map is sort of, you know, handed to us by FEMA, so we are sort of just acknowledging their definition of the floodplain as it pertains to the City of Falls Church, but I think I got a lot of the questions that you were getting from homeowners who were being mapped into the floodplain was, what does this mean for my
Exactly.
what I can do with my property, what does this mean for the structure, do I need to get, go and get flood insurance? And for those people, it's really gonna be helpful to know, oh, it's just this corner of my yard, or, oh, it's actually is touching the structure and I will need insurance, so. I'm really glad the city's gonna be able to do that, and it sounds like on a relatively expedited timeline.
I think, I mean, I'm.
Yeah, I don't really know how long these things take, so I'm.
I mean, two hundred structures, you know, to do that in in, you know.
By the end, so it's like six months, right?
To collect all the data, about three months, actually, I think under three months, it sounds great to me. And then and then process back a house, you know, do their, back in the office, and yeah, it sounds like around the end of the year or by the end of the year, we shouldn't have the the whole lot or as many as we were ready to get.
Sounds like a good use of ARPA funds too.
And I don't speak from any personal experience, but does this, it's good that we're getting more granular information. How does it, how does that process track with the experience that was expressed to us here earlier, which is, we didn't used to be in it, now we are, and other places are flooded. The thing now is what's up?
Yeah.
I mean, it's finding out your process will deal with, you know, what you see on the ground, experience.
Yeah, in a couple ways, so the when, again, when properties are being, you know, mapped out or mapped in as we're using, and that's that's an inaccurate, delicate parlance, I guess I should say, but I think we all understand what we're trying to say there. It doesn't necessarily mean structure, and that that's one part of it, so, and around the Greenway Downs area, there's there's a very few that are shifting one way or the other. Uh, I think that, I don't think there are any moving out.
There's one on Charo.
Yes, one on Charo, sorry, and then up to Leeny, but that, yeah. And that was, that that already I don't think was touching the structure, and it's just not touching the parcel boundary now, but.
So is that a location, this is like kind of a basic question, is that a location that when it rains, it floods?
Well, when it, um, I think the crux of the the appearance or the 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 way this is perceived is, these are mapped for one one percent flood risk areas, which we used to call one hundred year storm. Twenty nineteen, for instance, was a, what, I think, two two hundred fifty year storm, something of that effect, and in a two hour period. And it's about how much rainfall within a certain amount of period, that's the calculation, it's not rainfall per day or whatnot. So it it was, that was an intense storm, it was, it would overwhelm anyone's system, but that's just, that's just a fact. So this is the the purpose of the elevated certificates is to be able to specifically identify those that are in in, that are in the floodplain with the the engineering document that would, that is the only thing that will actually express that. And then we can look at improving, you know, providing, or working with grant programs that will help, you know, elevate those structures. Or we can look at a number of things, I I don't, I know there's quite a long list of resilience measures that that the city could engage in. I don't want to speak for the city because we're not, that's that's way ahead of time, but I think this is a phenomenal first step towards improving those situations.
So if my house is mapped into the floodplain, and and it does include some or all of the structure in which I live, and that puts an obligation on me to get flood insurance through FEMA, and the city will help to what, help facilitate that process?
The city doesn't necessarily play a part in that aside from our engagement in the NFIP. If we, if certain meetings had gone a different way, frankly, through this process, we would have been kicked out of the NFIP. I think you guys are probably aware of that at this point, and those homes, if they have federally backed loans, those loans could have been called in full immediately, so that's that's how we are helping them in that way. So, but we don't, if if a structure in the floodplain and never floods, that's fantastic, and that's, you know, that we're that's a model to be, you know, examined and repeated in other structures, but I think that's to a level that the city really can't interfere or engage, if that makes sense.
Can I follow up, maybe?
Yeah.
And maybe to follow up on the resident question earlier, how do you, how does the city, like, what kind of information are you providing to FEMA? Like, how are you sort of engaging with them, and how is the information that the city is providing to FEMA sort of informing their maps? Or do you even have, have insight into that?
City did not provide any information to FEMA, FEMA does their own studies, they use, they have planes flying over that use LiDAR, which is basically fancy laser pointers that, or or rangefinders, if you like golfing and whatnot, that shoot down billions of lasers and they measure how long it takes to bounce back. They get a terrain out of that or an elevation model out of that, and a set, and and process the data from there using rainfall estimates and whatnot, so we are not providing any data to them.
To define the map.
Correct.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not providing any to them, that we have no impact on the flood map. Yeah, so that, this is handed down from one high, we have no, you know, we're not.
That's my impression of it, so the the impact that the city can have is sort of in the in the actions that it takes to sort of make the community as a whole more flood resilient, and that will result in a discount to homeowners that have to carry flood insurance. Is that correct, or does result, I should say?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
So that's the way in which we we help certainly.
And that that is information that you do provide to FEMA about what this kinds of And that, that is information that you do provide to FEMA about what this kinds of actions the city is taking.
The activities and the regulations that we that we.
Yeah, and that, and that information that's provided to FEMA, the result of that is discounts to flood, as long as we're meeting certain thresholds that FEMA has established for what the city needs to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, to improve our resiliency. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Nobody ever picked up the phone and says, you know, we just had a doozy of a storm and an area that you would adopt includes in the floodplain FEMA is over its head in water.
That happened in Arlington in twenty nineteen, many places in here.
That can't, the question is, can't do it, does that happen?
We, we can, we do have the ability to do that. Uh, that's, that's called uh, locally de- locally determined uh, flood hazard areas, something to that effect. And essentially that, that's, that's another one of the activities that we could engage in that would give us points that could uh, um, amount to more dis- or greater discount in flood insurance rates. Uh, but that would essentially be us carving out locally defined areas that we then regulate exactly the same as floodplain.
Okay, so that's good. And then that would be my last question, because I'm definitely in over my head on this one. Uh, which is any citizen who feels like somehow they were mistakenly included in the floodplain and shouldn't be, should communicate with city staff. You know, be prepared to give evidence that suggests that when it rains, the damage is not uh, of the sort that would qualify for FEMA floodplain status.
Uh, my response to if a property owner uh, or or resident doesn't uh, feels that their property is not um, properly identified as in the floodplain. Uh, step one, certainly do not opt out of the elevation certificate program that we're about to undertake, because that will be a significant data point. And two, damage is not necessarily an indi- indicator of uh, whether one is in the floodplain or not. So I wouldn't say that is the most um, illuminative, uh, illustrious, you know, data point as well, so.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I I think I think the elevation certificate, but there's, there's other, um, there are ways through FEMA and I believe they're linked on the city website to uh, have ones, there there, there's a bunch of um, uh, acronyms. Uh, LOMAR or um, I think LOMAR Letter of Map Revision and Letter of Map Map Amendment. There's a bunch of things, uh, of mechanisms that FEMA has to pro- where a resident can provide data that will have, you know, lift, remove them from the floodplain if they have enough engineering to support it, but it's a.
The engineering can be very costly.
It's a. It can, and uh, I, so it's, it's, it's a, it's not a process that I have, since I have been a part of, you know, with the city, it's not a process that we've gone through uh, from the beginning. I know I finished up one of those processes for Tanner Hill, uh, the the building of Target and all that, but.
Is it less expensive to get the flood insurance than to get the engineering study that says I don't need the flood insurance?
I think so.
Alright, well, I see a hand up and back.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Can we recognize the question?
Oh, I see it. Yes, it's still a public hearing, we had probably already, but I, given the complexity of the issue.
Yeah.
I'm having it.
So I wanted to give kudos and I'm sorry.
You should probably give kudos.
I'm sorry, my name is Jan Johnson, two oh three West Westmoreland. And so I wanna give kudos and I'm sorry I don't know the department downstairs, but those folks down there have been wonderful through the years. We talked about like digging out the basement and filling it in and and all of those things. I think the issue right now is not um, that we, and I, we're talking for at least six of our neighbors. But I think the issue now is just understanding what happened. And it, just as you explained it, I don't know if you could like put together like this simple little, you know, pamphlet, you know, parcel versus structure and touchiness and that. If you could do that, that would be fantastic. Because now we understand, like, we understand, we're sitting here going, oh, that's it, you know, so we understand. But like our neighbor, she's eighty and she's like, what's going on, Janice? I'm like, I don't know. But I, like I said, just kudos because exactly what you're saying is exactly what they've been telling us down here. But then we get this letter out of the blue and it's like, what the hell? So.
I understand.
Thank you, and I'm like.
Again, as more, the more we talk about this, the more, more complexities.
It is a pleasure. Uh, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Yes, yeah.
Been a bear.
It does illustrate, again, yeah, how challenging, because then working with FEMA, obviously, it's challenging, so. Mr. Stevens, anything on your end?
No, I think the um, I think it's not because of our, it's more worse tonight.
They agreed. I I know we are kind of up against it too, so we pushed it to the, to the limit, but as far as timing goes, so um, I think unless there's other comments, we're ready for a motion.
I can do it.
Go for it. It's a short.
Oh, Sally, yeah.
Go ahead. Thank you very much.
I think you need to do that.
Yep. Public hearing is now closed. So now we can adjourn.
Okay, uh, so this is TO twenty four dash zero seven, ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Falls Church by altering the floodplain overlay district boundaries to be consistent with the floodplain boundaries set by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the National Flood Plane Insurance Program. Whereas on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, the city council referred ordinance TO twenty four dash zero seven, amending the zoning map to the planning commission for comment. And whereas the city charter section forty eight dash eighty six mandates that zoning amendments be referred to the planning commission by the city council for review and recommendation. And whereas the planning commission held required meetings with proper noticing during its May first, twenty twenty four and May fifteenth, twenty twenty four meetings. Now therefore I move that the planning commission recommends that council adopt TO twenty four dash zero seven. Second.
Same Mr. Speaker later, your roll call please.
Ms. Friedlander?
Yes.
Ms. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
And Mr. Pointez?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you commissioners, thank you very much for coming, thank you for your comments, thank you Mr. Ruben.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Learned a lot this week, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Lett, for helping me close the bubble here. Okay, last action item seven C, planning commission minutes from May first, twenty twenty four. Any comments?
I carefully read them and left my notes at home. I thought they were excellent.
I didn't see a single, a single thing.
There was one, there was one spot where I felt like a, an apostrophe was needed. There was some really good comments, butted me, there was something, there was something very complicated that some had the characteristic of being part of and I
No, 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 places that don't have apostrophes.
I couldn't quite get my way through it.
Was it possessive apostrophe, Missy?
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll find it and send it in.
You, you hunt it down.
Sounds like a motion.
Jack did a very elegant way of expressing the uh, business of taking a shower.
I, I have to say, these minutes are so much more detailed in the last six months or so than they used to be. They're really excellent.
Well, that's what I was reading, because they take a long time.
It was like some future kids that AI generated them and you're like.
Not AI, not AI, not yet.
I move approval of the minutes.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, oh.
I have something, I do have a comment.
That's the feeling.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, your perfect note. I'm so sorry. Um, so line ninety nine, it's either ninety nine or one hundred. So this talks about the, the concern of the differentiating heights and the facade materials to distinguish the individual units um, from each other, particularly on the corner unit on Park and Oak. And I think those are two very different things. I think my concern about the corner of Park and Oak. I mentioned I had concern over the vast amount of brick
Yeah.
and the lack of trans, like, lack of glazing or something else because no trees are gonna be there. And you're looking at this very blank brick wall with a couple of teeny tiny windows, which gets to the balance of privacy, but there's no bathrooms in those corners of the, really, the only thing that people can buy curtains and window treatments and things like that.
I mean, um.
That's what people do. They like to have financial right. But, but my concern really stemmed from the vast amount of brick on that corner, because it's very exposed. No trees are there, no trees will be planted there because Oak Street has the storm lines underneath.
It was not so much, it was not so much differentiating units as just the aesthetics of the look of the corner.
Yeah, so there weren't differentiating the units, but then the separate thing was the corner really was very.
Corner itself.
Yes, so I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just wanna make sure I get the right language.
So, I can say particularly on the corner unit on Park and Oak, expressed concern over the ratio of brick to glazing. Being heavy on the brick.
Ratio of brick to hazing?
Glazing.
Glazing.
Glazing is one of the.
Glazing, sorry, yeah.
You're getting news right now. Brick to glazing being too heavy on the brick wall facing the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm so sorry, so, so get it right, us.
No good, I, I'm looking for that typo, I know that we.
No, I know it'll be a good thing.
Alright, do we have a motion of the minutes?
Do Mr. Stevens have any changes? I don't see his hand up, but I can't see it. Okay.
I have approval of the minutes of the May first meeting as amended.
Seven.
The second.
Second.
One favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Oh.
Stand by.
Minutes are over. Alright, moving to information items, planning commissioners' reports. Report committee commissioners.
Our chair did an excellent job presenting the city council Monday night, Monday night, right? The annual report of the planning commission. Met with substantial interest and comments, I thought, from members of council, so that was good.
Thanks.
Proved some good discussion and it was good. Bravo to the chair.
Yes, after a good meeting of our, uh, commissioners, of the council meetings, it was more fun though, they had they had music, they had pictures, they had all kinds of proclamations.
It's API day and there was lots of celebrations and.
And for the most part, very good comments from council. One comment I didn't quite understand on conflict of interest, something that we should pay attention to, uh, I will follow up with that, with that council.
Yeah.
So that's good. Other commissioner reports? Mr. Stevens? I'm sure I caught all that, hopefully too, um.
You're breaking up a little bit, Mr. Stevens, yeah.
Breaking up a lot there, it's.
Maple and Anandale, that's what I heard, but I don't. Voluntary concessions for Maple and Anandale.
Uh, if I could just fit, fill in, um, so it was reported during the EDA meeting or maybe EDC, I can't remember, A meeting that Maple and Anandale would be coming back to city council to talk about voluntary concessions. That is not currently on the um, city council agenda right now, so there's a little bit of a, it was announced, but I haven't seen any follow-up on that.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
Pleased you're here, but I didn't have a.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a meeting.
And actually, to that point, um, also on May twentieth, we'll be hearing about um, an accessory dwelling unit plan. Oh, I guess you all are invited to that too, so.
That's next Monday's meeting.
Is that a joint?
Do I think?
We're invited.
Marly? Yes, you are officially invited.
Yes, I think I did.
You've been on my.
Late this afternoon, invited everyone to participate in, in that May twentieth Monday session.
Who did it go to? I didn't get it.
I don't know if it went out yet.
I don't think you'll talk about that, because, but actually, before, let's, let's say, anything else, Mr. Stevens on your end?
Yeah.
That's fun. It's my anniversary, please.
Okay. Any other commissioner reports? I think we can get this in the director's report, which is coming up next.
Uh, we did have one item in the commissioner's report.
Oh, the information item. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, I asked um, staff to include, let me pull up um, this Brookings Institution, this is a great article by Jimmy Schutz, is that how you say her last name, Schutz? Okay, um, talking about, you know, how accessory dwelling units could be used to expand affordable housing with some support from the um, city, so there are um, programs uh, that have been established to help construct these units and that would um, also help for their kind of ongoing operations as affordable units. So just, uh, one, you you have to kind of read through to find the findings, but you know, different, different cities trying different approaches and seeing what works. So it can be informative for our discussion. I think when people think about these um, units, accessory dwelling units, they may not necessarily think of them as affordable housing. Um, or maybe not deeply affordable housing, but it's, it's possible in some communities for them to be used in that way. So I just thought it was an interesting piece.
I think what I found striking about this is the interchangeability of ADU, where it, it became kind of confusing to me what, if they were
Yeah.
targeting affordable or if they were targeting accessory.
What the ADU was referring to?
And then, yeah, and so that's what I, I found very difficult to kind of follow through this, I was like, but I think those two things need to be decoupled
Okay, yeah, that's a lot.
because I think, I mean, in terms of our future conversations about it, because we really need to examine what our intention is
Mm-hmm.
for the city in terms of affordability and in terms of access, a- accessory units.
And diversification of housing.
And diversification of housing, but I think there needs to be a little bit more intention rather than, I feel like it, it keeps getting lumped into the same pot and people get confused when they hear ADUs, like, because, because of both ways, like, some people who really want affordability
Yeah.
are like, great, we're gonna get ADUs, and then they're like, oh, these aren't affordable.
No, that's not an ADU.
Right, yeah, and so, you know, and then you have the other side of people wanting more accessory units. And you're like, why do I need to make that affordable, you know, so.
Well, they don't need to, but it could be, it could be easier for them to build or it could be, they could have some sort of, you know, um, funding to to operate them as affordable. It's kind of the program, the way I understood these programs to be operating.
I see that, but I think we need to think about the implications of, of doing that, something like that.
Yeah, no, I mean, it would be a policy decision for council to make in a program that we'd have to establish, but I guess I just, um, I thought it was I, I mean, community, I'm glad that communities are trying these different kinds of approaches to, to expand um, their housing affordability. But I totally hear you on the ADU, ADU confusion, and I think like as we, that's a good note. Um, Mr. Trainer, maybe as we're moving that discussion along, I don't know, do we wanna call them backyard cottages? That sounds very quaint. But maybe accessory dwelling units is, is just, or that shorthand is just, I think, I think I've seen other, maybe, people is there another similar term, ALU, ALU, separate living units?
ALU.
That might be, maybe we adopt that for this discussion just to kind of keep things clearer.
Separate, but I think also like in looking at the implications of it, will, I think it's great to allow people to do what they want to accomplish on their property, right? If, if they are looking to have family on their property or have a place for their kids to come home from college and live because it's, you can't find something affordable, but in reality, I think we need to really face the facts of whether or not that's gonna move the needle of the diversification of housing type and if we're addressing the actual housing crisis, right?
I think it's one tool in the toolkit.
Yeah.
Is the way I, I would look at it personally, and I don't think it's the answer to our affordable housing challenges on its own, but maybe with support from additional programs, like these, the communities are trialing. but maybe with support from additional programs, like these amenities are trialing, that could be part of the answer.
Yeah.
Would be what I would, I think we have to kind of do A to Z, a lot of it, a lot of different things to solve this, um it's not just one, so anyway, I think
A lot of, yeah.
when people think of these backyard cottages, you know, they they may not be thinking of them in in terms of their potential for affordability and maybe with a little, this just showed me that with a little support, maybe that is a possibility, um, anyway, glad you read it.
I do appreciate it.
I think that
See, we have a speaker series after all.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Stoddard.
Uh, thank you, this is chair, members of the commission, uh I don't have a written report for you, other than the look ahead and the agenda, so I'll uh go straight to that. Uh, May twentieth is the first item, uh the first date listed in your look ahead, uh as mentioned, uh tonight, uh there are two items, uh well, all the guidance on the council agenda of interest, uh uh but two in particular, um uh comp plan, the demographics chapter, going back to council's work session item, uh as well as the kickoff for the accessory living units uh conversation, um and as was mentioned, uh planning commission as well as the housing commission have been invited to uh join in that work session, um
So I must have started, is that gonna be here in this room? How it will be joining, like what are the logistics for that uh Monday session?
Still working that out, uh I know the invitation, I think the biggest thing was just to make sure that the invitation got sent and then staff will figure out how to make it all work.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Uh, I will follow up on that. Wait. Okay, uh let's see, at least we have the what and the and the and who and the when, we've got, we got three of them down. Uh, let's see, so uh let's see, then also of interest to the commission, uh council's going to uh uh hold a first reading, which I know can sound a little bit scary, but really first reading is just the formal kickoff of of consideration, uh council is scheduled to consider first reading uh on a topic that's been discussed before, this is the idea of uh how do we accommodate uh 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 re-tenanting of uh existing buildings? Uh and so staff is looking at a very targeted or 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 tactical change uh within the parking code. We're not trying to rewrite parking uh overall, we're not trying to change the the allowed commercial uses, this is more where you've got a building and it tends to trying to move in, how do we get rid of some of the red tape uh that stops that from happening, right? It's the, you can see the frustration when somebody comes in and they say, I've signed the lease, I got my building permits, I'm ready to go, and then someone says, ah, parking.
Twenty more credits.
Um, and so this is a way of of how we remove that hurdle uh from our vibrant commercial districts, uh especially with the the council priorities and strategies of not only being distance friendly, but also being a more walkable, like
And preserving the
The existing building, right, uh so that people don't have to tear everything down just to park it.
The ruins. The ruins.
Um, okay, so that'll go out for, as I mentioned, that'll be considered for first reading, uh and then that would really kick off that process, which I expect to be referred out to at a minimum, planning commission as well as the E D A, I'm sure other groups would be interested, uh and as I said, that would be the start of the the conversation. Uh, June fifth, uh your next regular, oh wow, it's a long, uh it's a long month for you, uh let's see, so June fifth, your next regular session, uh action on the demographics chapter, which you saw uh earlier tonight, uh this is a new kind of thing for you, so happy to take any questions on this, but the parklets project, uh it's being, uh it involves a a series improvements uh in the South Washington street area, uh one, uh the one noted here is uh in Cavalier Trail Park, the sort of spur uh that runs along the auto shop, uh and then the other two parklets, which aren't noted here, but I'm I'm happy to share the designs, if you want to see them, uh one is at the Triangle Park at the corner of Anandale and Washington, and then the other in the the alley that runs along the uh the Autometrist Building across from Pillwood Avenue. This one's on your agenda, uh because the post-parklet location uh is inside the Resource Protection Area, the R P A, uh and it has to do with the specifics of where it is and whether it's on the seaward side or the landward side of some specific distance from uh the stream for which the R P A has been created, requires a water quality impact assessment and a formal finding by the planning commission that the changes would be uh um uh either worth undertaking or 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 minor in nature, so you all have to make a formal finding on that. We're working up the staff report, which will of course walk you through your responsibilities, the questions that you all have to address, and of course, the analysis underpinning the staff's recommendation. Um, um, uh that analysis is ongoing, but obviously I expect staff to be making a positive recommendation on that, uh once we, um, uh otherwise, we would have skipped it. Um, and then the other thing, this is coming to you on a short, uh sort of, uh short timeline as well, uh the uh city council has the opportunity to to purchase a property at two twenty two West Cameron, which is of course in the Greenway Downs neighborhood, uh I, we can double check, but I believe it's also in the floodway, uh or or at least the floodplain. Uh there is an opportunity to buy this, uh and the council wants to pursue that, and obviously, uh uh wanting to be in coordination with the uh planning commission on this one is sending it to you all for your recommendation. Um, so we'll have that item teed up for you as an action item as well on June fifth, uh given the timing and of course, real estate transactions can move quickly in the city, um it will have to come for you for action that night. Uh, June tenth, demographics is then in front of the uh city council for action, uh and then that commercial parking, as I mentioned, we're trying to be mindful of your agendas, uh so June twenty sixth uh would be your first work session on that that commercial building, uh parking relief, which I mentioned earlier. Uh, one thing I uh I want to bounce off the commission is the potential for canceling that July third uh meeting, of course, July fourth is a a holiday, uh recognizing Independence Day. Um, we we don't have anything currently on the agenda for July third, and so my recommendation is that we cancel that one.
I'm the other ten, so I'm sorry if you can't see.
I think we'll have R W A Corv, I think probably.
Uh, so that would bring, uh that would move your um uh uh business to the July seventeenth meeting, which would then be a required meeting, uh where you all could again talk about uh commercial parking, uh as well as the accessory living units.
I need that to change.
Yeah, nice, I'm back.
Okay. Uh, and that that concludes my report, I'm happy to to answer any questions on projects or or any of the agenda items.
Questions?
I know August is a long way away, but do you all traditionally meet uh twice in August, or do you just try to meet once?
It's usually a recess somewhere, either in August or September, it's usually triggered by the start of school, um but we can also look at um August recess.
Turn your time over, ready?
No, I never go anywhere, I just looking about how to kind of my fun filled summer.
Mr. Stevens, any questions?
Oh, one thing I
They're participating remotely.
Sorry, one more thing, if I may, if you don't have it, uh the city is hosting a bike, uh pit stop for Bike to Work Day, which is this Friday, uh will be, uh I think the location is uh where it has been in recent years, work by the firehouse on Little Falls, uh so it's an opportunity not only to enjoy Bike to Work Day, uh but also to check out the W N O D crossing, uh that that crossing is mostly constructed, so you can see the new treatments, uh and that I will say that that crossing is a little bit of an outlier, because it's the only one where the the head and bike crossings are actually together, uh on all the others, they are separated, of course. They come together shortly before they reach Little Falls, so they can get across all the bridges, but at all the other crossings throughout the city, they will be separated, uh uh clearly demarking the the pedestrian bicycle ways.
Well, it looks really nice, even if it is, I've ridden through there twice today, it's lovely.
What does it read?
One other question about uh a topic which is uh affordable housing, um not accessory living units, but there's been a discussion this morning, suggested that there was possibly some council interest in tracking uh what's going on with the fields in particular, and I'm thinking that, well, that express it positively and making sure that we have a good strategy for dealing with that, and the manager said that that would be something that staff would be working on, sounds like through the through the summer, I don't know if we would have a role in that or what it would be, but just ask that we keep that on our radar screen, and Virginia Village, I assume that the, along the way, that, you know, agreement with Wesley and the state is hopefully, it's coming together and will happen sometime this summer, um, both those projects could be occupied sometime later on in the summer, things go well.
Yeah, I think continuing to talk about uh sort of the important things, uh is the, is is a good way to make sure they they happen the way we want them to, I think that the long term, I think, hope for um the fields is that it remains uh committed to portable project, um and that uh sort of any concerns about sort of displacement can be um sort of removed, right? That 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 there isn't a a concern about displacement, that the the units can be maintained at their current rates, and then what's the best way to actually make that happen? Um, I know that's something of interest in the manager's office and and planning office and the 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 housing office, and so I know it's something that that all the staff have been talking about, and then I think there's just a question about how to um uh engage with obviously the the public bodies on that as well, um but I'll I'll continue to stress that internally. Uh, on Virginia Village, I know we're trying to to get those properties wrapped up and that the agreement's with Wesley in place, uh and I can follow up on the status of those as well.
Please be important. Okay, anything else, will you go in order? Any correspondence, any additional correspondence, okay, anything else, Tim on your end, though?
So, so Tim, I wanna know, can you hear me when I'm whispering to Andrew?
That's the audio on your end.
I'm testing the audio on your end.
The new mics.
The new mics, we have no mics in the room.
He wants to know how sensitive they are.
I need to know how sensitive, can you hear, can you hear me when I'm whispering? Okay, good, now, cool, thank you.
Alright.
Have a good time in Cincinnati.
Enjoy the conference.
Thanks, Tim, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then how long does it stay on? Where's Sophie? When when do we get, when do we get on clock?
The green light is on.